Okay.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We have a moment and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Roger Gunderson and Darren Hall, Darren's with Berkstrom Electric here in Devils Lake and to give us an update on the generator and the power outage from last Friday. So come on up Darren.
But is the green light on?
Okay.
Just a little guy.
Yeah.
There you go.
Guys, one mind, we had a generator replacement scheduled for last Thursday and had some difficulties and maybe we can go through what some of those difficulties were.
Well, yeah, we can all call it a breaker. Darren's probably gonna call it something else, but big breaker downstairs that just wasn't functioning as it should. And roughly, that probably needs to be replaced. Just as a, like we were saying earlier, a big Band-Aid for now. Darren's gonna explain that a heck of a lot better. I was with Lee downstairs this morning and kind of showing him what went wrong and whatever.
Yeah. So the, there's a maintenance disconnect on the switchgear down there. When we went to turn that back on, we shut off all the breakers on the gear so you reduce the arc load on the main breaker. So we turned the main back on, that came back on fine. We started testing, or we went through and turned on the individual breakers. We noticed that there's an 800 amp breaker that turns the bus duct on that beats all the individual panels on each floor. That breaker didn't feel right, we didn't want to come back. It didn't feel like it was turning back on and it wouldn't shut off. Usually when your breaker trips in your house, you gotta shut it off all the way and then turn it back on. This breaker will not do that. It will not shut off and reset. It's stuck on. That was the beginning of the trouble. The next thing was we turned all the other breakers on. And the internal, the breaker snapped on, but internally, one or two of them hung. And so some of the phases closed, but the one phase would stay open. So we weren't getting all the power we needed to the panels on each floor. And we didn't realize that was happening until everybody came to work on Friday morning and lights weren't working and some of the outlets here and there weren't working on the phase that was missing. So you may have had everything working in one office and the next office would have six outlets working at four now. Where the lights in the hallway in one area weren't working. So we started tracking it down. We started, we thought it was with the bus duct because that breaker was wonky. So we had, since we couldn't shut it off, we couldn't start opening the switches on the individual floors to test that until we were able to turn the building off again. We had to shut the whole building off. Once we did that, we, we had a breaker actually right out here that is on the bus duct that feeds the panel on this floor. That was sticky. And so we had to pull that apart and we sprayed it down WD-40. You know, everything, this was installed in 1960. And so it's 64 years old. And that grease inside there is rock hard. And so we had to spray it down WD-40 and break all that loose to get that switch to start functioning again. Once we got that switch functioning again, we restored power. We checked every panel again. And we found everything up here was working again, but the down in the basement still had one panel that wasn't working. And that was not bad from the bus duct, that was bad from a breaker and a switchgear. Luck would have it, that panel had a lot of spare spaces in it down there. So we moved circuits around to work around that one leg that wasn't coming back from. As far as I know right now, we haven't had a cover out to get it checked it, but as of right now, that breaker is still missing for anything. It's just, it can close one day and start working, we don't know, but it's, it's not functioning correctly. It's not gonna hurt anything the way it is right now. The one that bothers me is the 800 amp for the bus duct that controls every floor. The panels on, on every floor except the basement. Since we couldn't shut it off, we don't know if it'll function and shut off. And if it does, we don't know if it'll ever come back. I contacted Square D, that's the manufacturer of that switchgear. And of course, they don't have that breaker or make that breaker. I was first led to believe that they could come and repair it. I've been finding out today now that that is not the case. They would have to come and try and retrofit another breaker in its place in that gear. They would have, they'd have to send somebody out and they would have to measure it up and figure out what they need to do. And then they would make a plan for that. But as of right now, it is on and it's working, but we don't, we can't, we don't know what the future is for that. And honestly, we don't know. It could have been like that for a long time. I don't know. When we started the whole process, there was the main disconnect with the main breaker. When the building was built, the main transformer, like that transformer there, was part of the switchgear down in the basement. And so the high voltage came in straight to the basement. At some point that was removed, I don't know when. And they moved it up there and put a main disconnect down there. Well, when they put that in, they put it in, wired it backwards. They brought the high side, the transformer side to the bottom of the breaker. And then the line side, they took it off the top because that was the closest route, which is backwards. I don't know if that would ever function the way it was at. So when we started our power outage on Thursday night, that was the first thing we had to do, is fix that correctly. And then from there, we, it just took us an extra four hours to get that worked around and then to put everything back together. So so far, we've, we've cleaned up a few things, but we found a lot more that's wrong.
So when Square D, if they, if we decide to have them come and replace that properly, you said they have to measure it. So we'd have to have power off, they'd have to take that apart and do what they need to do, just as step one.
Yeah, well, and when they come to look it over, I don't know how, how depth, how depth they'll have to take it apart. I don't think they'll have to take the breaker off or apart. I think they'll just take the covers off. But, but to be honest with you, that is, it is very dangerous piece of switchgear down there. In all my years, I have never seen where the bus comes right onto the front. The bus is where the main power connects to and all breakers connected to the bus. It's within inches of the covers on the front. And if you took the wrong two covers, screws out first, that cover would have swung back and hit that bus. And then the only thing protecting it is a 1200 amp breaker. And hopefully that blows. It is very dangerous. And I'm sure that the Square D rep will realize that and he'll take precautions. But I don't know if he would need to shut it off or if he would just take the covers off carefully. Because the first time I took it apart, I annoyed when we took it apart and I found out luckily that that was hot before I, anything went into it. But I did take that cover off, it's a breaker on. The switchgear, the entire gear down there should be updated. Now, I was talking to an engineer today and that said, they do, they can come in and they can retrofit. They just leave the old jacket there, basically. And they'll retrofit and build new busing and everything right inside of that. Right inside that container and then they would be able to connect up to that bus duct. But it would take measuring and all that stuff. It's a, it's a process, but it's a lot, I think it'd be a lot simpler than to try and disconnect everything that's in there. Pull the wire back, get the new gear in place. There's a lot of work that needs to be done down there. The switch, if, if we had to pull just the switchgear out, and I'm guessing it would take about six people, two to three days. Because all the wire, all the main theaters come in that panel and we'd have to pull them back somewhere. And it's that old cloth wiring and that's not gonna be easy. It's not. It's, I've had experiences where we've never gotten, that was trying to lift it out of the floor with a bobcat. And we ended up breaking the wire off before it came off. So it's just, it's, it's not easy. It's not a simple thing.
We're probably better off having them rebuild that gear right in the fall, update that gear.
Yeah, options. My recommendation would be have, bring an engineer in, have them look it over, come up with solutions. I know we, we retrofitted Lake Ridge State College a few years back. We left all the cans in the walls and we put new guts in the cans and put new face plates on. So everything, you know, the box and the pipe and all that stuff that came in the box stayed in place. And they just built, amp built back boxes or the gear, the breaker, the bus and all that really in place. That was real sick. It worked out really well.
So if they rebuild it, they don't have to pull the wire, everything stays.
Yeah. But, but you're also looking at why are the spinners since 1960? So a lot of the stuff that we saw coming off the bus duct up here that went to the house is that old cloth wire. It's got the cloth and I think there's a little rubber coat underneath it. And that stuff gets hot and brittle over time and it kind of just falls off. The jacket or the conductors.
But an engineer would be able to make this recommendation on that?
Yeah. They would come in and probably look everything over and put together a budget number for you.
They could give us time for it.
As far as how long it would take to tear it down and put it back together?
Right.
Yeah.
Once they build.
Yeah, once, they'd probably give you a ballpark, yeah.
So estimate when the engineer might come?
That's, that's, that would be, you guys, my job was just supposed to be out there with the crater. And it's kind of evolving as hell.
Is there an immediate fix that needs to be done or could be done, or you think an engineer would be the first step?
I think, I think your first step was maybe have a Square D rep come in and look at that breaker and see what it, take to retrofit that one breaker. And get you the Band-Aid for now. Because it's right next to the transfer switch. And the transfer switch, when they transfer is advanced, it's got a good slab. Because it's got to switch fast so it doesn't drop bigger. And so that rattling made something to that breaker. I could pull it off or I could pull it off. Right, you're right. And then resetting it, that's the problem.
Do you think you could arrange that with the, is it Square?
Square, yeah. So I've been, I've been in contact with Dakota Supply and Groundworks.
Okay.
They were working with Square D to get me pricing on what it, to have somebody come out. And then I could pass that on to you guys. And then you guys will have to make that decision on them coming out. The, I don't know if they have a budget number or if it's a straight up cost or what, how they would do that.
I guess I'll make a motion that we have them come out. I'll make a motion that we have them come out and look at that breaker and see what we can do until we can get an engineer to come out and look the whole project over.
I would second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor to have a Square D representative come out and take a look at that. Give us an estimate and give us recommendations from there. Is that kind of the basis of the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion?
So when you said you had to get this one, we're gonna work it with WD-40 and stuff, is that something we should be doing? Would that, if we did it to the rest of them on each floor, is that something that would possibly prevent the problem or create more problems?
At this point, I would not mess with them. Honestly, there's a 400 amp, a 100 amp or 400 amp in this closet over here. And I told everybody, you stay away from that one up there, let's fix this one here and we'll just cross our fingers and hope this doesn't create more issues. Okay. But yeah, no, we had the door open and we sprayed it down. And I sat and worked that thing for quite a while until I got a good snap out of it. And that, and then even when I closed it again, I heard a snap and then I had to pop on the cover a couple times and then I heard a snap the rest of the way. And then I was, I felt better about it. So, but yeah, no, it's, it is, I don't know, it's Pandora's box. You don't.
So when we would replace anything downstairs, we should probably replace all of those too?
Yeah, they, the engineer, you would have the engineer walk through and show that and identify then issues as well. Those buckets on there would have to be retrofitted on there as well. They would come up with a retrofit for those as well. Or you take the bus duct out completely and you extend those conduits all the way down to the basement and have them here. And eliminate the bus duct and those switches up here.
So when you say that those, that old canvas wire covering, it turns out that you've got to pull all that wire, replace everything. And you said that that doesn't come apart or it doesn't slide out very well, then I mean, are we talking, you gotta run the conduit and all that?
It's a possibility. The.
Cause it's aluminum wire, right?
Yeah, there's, it could be, it's either aluminum or copper plaid. The size of the jacket, the size of the wire kind of leads me to believe it might be aluminum. Going with that. It's just kind of the size of it, but. Yeah, the, and it could be, it could be that wire's fine. The pipes look like they're big enough, since it was a bigger jacket, it looks like the pipes are sized big enough to wear water and water over them. It's easier than, you know, fit that pipe better than that old stuff.
If the old stuff comes up.
If it comes up, right.
So then you're just cutting chunks of pipe out just completely, right? I mean, you'd have to because you have to replace it.
And that's if it's, if it's accessible. That's the other trick. I know right out of this gear here, it comes out, it hits an LV and then goes up into the ceiling. I do the tracing.
Each floor has that same.
Yeah.
Same area.
So we have a motion on the floor for getting the Square D representative out here. Sooner the better, probably. And get us an estimate on that, that initial fix. Further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay. I, I think, you know, set of circumstances that, that arose on, with this project did open up Pandora's box a bit. As you mentioned, with a plethora of problems, but also some shortcomings on our own end. I think we need to make some precautions moving forward and making sure that everything is up to date as we do go forward with something like this in the future. Just for the continuity of government, you know, we realized how reliant we are on, on computers and power and everything else. Having to shut down that day. But I don't think we had any other choice. You know, you can't operate in the dark and can't operate without power and can't be open to the public. And so, hey, you know, initially was gonna be a couple hour fix in the afternoon on Thursday. It turned out to be a, just about an entire day on Friday. So I, I think it opened everybody's eyes to some of the issues that when working on a 64 year old building and some of the internal components of it raises some problems. So appreciate you guys putting in the work that you did and getting us back up and running as soon as you did. I know talking with you yesterday that it sounds like, you know, based on what the engineer, electrical engineer would find, we could be in for a major fix and major downtime, which would really cause some disruptions. So we'll see what the Square D representative has to say and see if we can't get by initially for, you know, at least in the near future without catastrophic shortfalls. But looking at it, you know, we thought we were doing the facility a favor by retrofitting a new generator to completely power the entire building. And just opened up bigger problems for us. And so we'll have to make sure that we have more boxes and those boxes get checked before we dive deeper into something like this. So appreciate you coming in Darren. Anything else for us?
No, the, just the, you know, if we would have left the power on it and tried fixing those switches, we could have caused brownouts. That would have damaged computers and that's, the brownout is worse than, than not having power on it. Electronics do not matter. Yeah, so I, I think the best thing was to shut the power off. So we didn't damage anything trying to get some battery starts.
But, and I do think that that did show some, some of our weaknesses internally as well. You know, some of our battery backups weren't up to date and operating correctly. And some of those other things like that. Making sure that we have all those in place and maybe a, you know, monthly maintenance schedule on some of these things that as we go forward. And making sure that they all get checked on a regular basis kind of thing. And so.
Well, it's probably good it happened this way and not have something go down, down there and not, you know, on a weekend and nobody, you know, I mean, it's, it's bad, but it definitely could have been.
It could have been a lot worse, yes, absolutely. So appreciate you guys' work. And anything else? So you'll get the Square D representative in contact with us and, okay. And then maybe get those names of those electrical engineers to us and we can, you know, make contact with them and see if they, we can arrange something through, whether it be a open bid process or something like that.
Absolutely.
So appreciate you Darren. Thank you. Thank you Roger. Uh, we're past the set time for the hearing on the appraised values. Sorry about that. I wasn't paying attention to my time. So do we have to close regularly meeting and have a hearing? So we have our appraised values in front of us. So just a few properties listed on there. Looks like if you, an entrepreneur, you could buy a whole city block of the city of Lawton. So we have to approve the appraised values, is that correct?
The areas that have no figures in them, those have been on the county's foreclosure list for a number of years. So I want to get with the treasurer and find out exactly what is owed. Cause it goes back quite a few, quite a few years. So, and I did receive an email on Friday that there is someone that is interested in the four vacant lots in Lawton. So I'm just waiting on a response back from.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we could go ahead and approve the numbers that we have listed.
Yes.
Okay.
Those are actually the newest. I mean, there's five, five property owners.
And this is the first step before it goes to sheriff's auction or whatever?
This is part of the process. Yeah. Yep.
Be an opportunity for people to purchase them.
Yeah. And they still have till 5:00 PM on the third Tuesday in November to redeem this property. So. But the figures, the figures listed here would be three years plus the estimate of the current year's taxes that will be done for November.
Questions? Entertainer motion to accept the appraised values?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the appraised values. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mr. Fieldson, you are up.
All right. I don't have any updates on any of the projects we got going right now. They're all just taking care of themselves. We got our 2005 or 2025 program sheet that we have to review with the DOT. Looks like this. This is all of our projects that we have coming up that would have federal aid money tied to them. The only thing that's not on there is our project that we're gonna be doing in 2026. So the only thing we might want to change on this is adding that project that wouldn't get funded until then, but at least it would be on the list. Everybody get a chance to look at that or at all? Not understandable.
But I don't think we got it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, well, it shows that our four flood, flood projects from 2022 where the roads washed out, there's those four are on there. And it also shows the South Pinawakon project that they're doing a four mile road widening on. Cause those federal or state funds there, not federal, but. And then we don't have any projects listed on, for paving on this sheet. So that'd be the only thing we need to add is that one. And then this requires the signature of the chairman. But it doesn't have to be done. Hold on, this one has to be done right away. They'll want to review this with us at the convention in a couple of weeks.
Next week.
Monday. Yep.
It's coming fast. I think it's 8:45 on Monday is our time.
And you can just add that in then?
Yeah, we can just put it in pencil and then they'll, they'll prove it that way. So if that's all we want to do, we just need a motion for the chairman to sign that.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to have the chairman go ahead and sign our program sheet with the DOT. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
The second thing is every year we have to sign our construction and maintenance agreement with the DOT. Now, this one isn't due until December 10th, but we just got it mailed, from an email. So, and it basically says that we're maintaining the roads that we receive federal aid dollars on. You guys get that one right? Okay. They highlighted a few. They highlighted a few blurbs that what says on their, on the sheets, they said out that what we're supposed to be maintaining. Uh, one of the big ones is for prohibited access and encroachments upon the right of way of the county road, of the federally roads. Otherwise, we're pretty much taking care of this. And it's an agreement that we have to sign every year. Just saying that we're maintaining them. There's uh, requires the signatures from state's attorney, county auditor, chairman and the highway superintendent. This is kind of, oh, this is the other one. That's what the signature sheet looks like. These both came as emails. So the basically this is just something we do every year. I mean, we're just telling them that we are maintaining the federally in roads with, with, with our enforcement.
So that highlighted portion that you talked about there, is that, was it highlighted for a reason like?
This is just a sample, but I don't know. I guess uh, this is what, this is what we agreed to do. Pretty basic. Like put the proper signing up and.
The stuff you're already doing.
Turn the next page.
The very last one is really, there's some encroachments on some of our right of ways, but the state highway department has the same issues. And every other county in the state does too. Well, I shouldn't say every.
So by, what do you mean by encroachments?
Uh, say farming activities or something like that. That's the big one.
So we need a motion to have the uh, state's attorney, county auditor, chairman and highway superintendent go ahead and sign the agreement for the construction maintenance agreement with D O T. Says that we're maintaining in roads that we receive federal aid dollars for.
Right.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have, we have a second? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Nay. Motion carries.
Okay, next item, uh, R D O Equipment did deliver our lowboy trailer. Uh, the invoice was for the same amount that they had bid, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay R D O Equipment.
So moved. Second.
We have motion and a second to go ahead and pay R D O Equipment for the delivery of the lowboy trailer. Invoice for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Gessner.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye.
Passes invoice paid.
And we also have a third progressive estimate for the paving project that we did on Ramsey County three. The mail construction did for us. Uh, that caught that uh, estimate was fifty-six thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay mail construction.
Make that motion to pay mail construction.
Second.
We have motion and a second to pay mail construction for the work uh, completed on Ramsey County three. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, the last thing on my agenda there, I'm not even going to really bring up. We did get an estimate from Wang's today for just under seven thousand dollars. So we're going to try and fix that ourselves. One of our stone plows for our trucks needed some repairs on the, where the cutting edge bolts on. Though just for information, we're going to try and fix that ourselves. Um, that's all I know. You guys have anything for me?
Hmm? Okay. Fairly approved itself.
Yeah, which is what's there.
Thank you. Anything else, Kevin? Guys enjoying the uh, nice fall?
Yes, absolutely. Been a while since we could play all of October.
Yeah. I shouldn't have said that.
Bring up Kevin. So Mr. Sagi is retired, right? He just hasn't decided when he's going to do it. So I know you and I had talked about maybe getting that advertised when we have a chance, but he said he doesn't have a for sure date yet.
And just to expand on that, we, I did talk to John today. He doesn't officially write the letter, but he gave me a date. I said, well, we may start advertising your job if you haven't seen the paper. So I gave him the heads up. So and I talked to Brian, we're getting into works, but it hasn't gone in there yet.
Just so everybody's aware.
Right.
Would, would he like to stay on for as a trainer? You know, he's a really good blade operator. We hate to see him go, but uh, understand that. He's uh, well deserved for retirement. So.
I, I will certainly ask him, but I think I totally answered.
I know. But yeah, he does a phenomenal job on roads. So appreciate all his hard work and dedication over the years.
And we have one other one that's going to retire. So John is going to be, I gotta get this straight. Yeah, I think I got two retirees. I gotta, don't sure I get this turned around now. John is retiring the end of November. And the second one, who was a shop, highway maintenance worker is retiring the twentieth of December. So that one will be coming up also, but it'll be a while yet.
All right. Anything else, Kevin? Commissioners, anything for Kevin? Appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Sheriff Lang, welcome.
Just going to give you a little bit of an update. Uh, we are down one deputy. So we're advertising for another deputy spot. So hopefully we can get that filled. We've already seen some interest. We haven't even got the advertisements out yet. So it's looking pretty good. Uh, what I need tonight is I need your approval to pay a bill to Black Hills ammunition. We did some research and we bought bulk ammunition for our training. Uh, we went to four different qualific- or I should say different qualifications. We're qualifying four times a year instead of once a year. Uh, so we stay more proficient. So we bought a thousand rounds of uh, two twenty-three and another thousand rounds of pistol ammunition. Some of this is duty rounds and some of this is practice. And it come to four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. And I do have that budgeted in my budget and there's money there for it. I just need approval from the commission to pay the bill.
How much is that, Brian?
Four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two.
I would make the motion to pay for the ammunition. Second, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and pay the four sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars to Black Hills ammunition. Should have this come before us, before you ordered that or? Don't we have a department limit on spending?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. This is more than twenty-five hundred, correct?
Correct.
Next time.
So you want me to present it before we?
Well, I, I think that's the protocol, isn't it? Is that departments get approval to purchase it before they order?
Yeah, my bad.
Okay. So, but understand it's needed and it's good purchase price on that. So. Further discussion on uh, paying the bill to Black Hills ammunition? Hearing none, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Bulk.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Will Helmy.
Aye.
Brett.
Aye. Motion carries. Black Hills ammunition is paid. Anything else, Sheriff?
No, that'd be it. Other than we sent some guys to low light training for uh, clearing buildings in low light. Uh, they came back and they're going to start doing some instructing and teaching the rest of the department. So we're kind of getting to the point now where we're, we got guys that went out, obtained training, coming back, we're training. So it's going to save us a little bit of money instead of sending people out. So I've been writing curriculums and getting them post-approved through the state. So they're getting their hours that way. So, so we're moving forward.
Great.
So that's all I got unless you've got something for me.
Appreciate all you guys' hard work. Appreciate you seeing out, seeing you guys out on the streets. So.
Thank you.
Keep up the great work. Thank you. Unfinished business, comprehensive water plan, Ramsey County Water Board. Any further thoughts on, we tabled this at our last meeting? I shared this with state's attorney's office, got their opinion on this. And Daniel, want to share your thoughts?
I certainly can. Thank you, Commissioner Frith. Just for the record, my name is Daniel Howe. I'm assistant state's attorney for Ramsey County. Uh, I've reviewed the comprehensive plan. Uh, I've not done a whole lot of background research into what exactly should be going into one of these before it's approved and submitted to the state water commission. That would be my next steps. Uh, but I've not had time to do that as the rest of the job unfortunately gets in the way on occasion. Uh, I do have some baseline concerns with what's in this comprehensive plan as far as the level of maintenance of the lake uh, being set at fourteen forty-one. I understand that that might be what's uh, the water commission would like the lake to be at, but there are all sorts of restrictions that uh, are placed on management of wat- bodies of water, especially as it relates to uh, Clean Water Act and other federal uh, legislations. Uh, I'm not sure that this plan is even feasible uh, as far as just that one piece goes uh, getting the lake down to fourteen forty-one. I, I'm not sure how that would be accomplished feasibly. This plan doesn't really lay out how that would be accomplished. It just sets a goal uh, without any practical uh, obtaining, practical options of obtaining that goal. I, this plan also obligates the county to pay landowners for their land that's inundated. Uh, I'm not sure exactly how much acreage that it, that is at this time. I'm not sure how much that obligates the county to pay landowners for, as this plan doesn't give the county much wiggle room in negotiation. It just sets a price and whether or not the land is worth that amount. I'm not the expert to determine those sorts of things, but that is concerning to me. Uh, just in what this claims to obligate the county to do. Uh, and there's the ongoing issue of the clouded title on this inundated land. If the state is going to claim that they own it and we're paying these individual landowners to basically sell their interest in the land to us. What, I'm not sure what we're buying in this situation. Uh, because if the state is claiming that they own this land, it's owned by a private individual. And then we buy whatever they own. I, I'm not sure what I'm recommending that the county buy and spend money on. I'm not sure that that's a wise investment for the county. I understand that the goal here is to right some wrongs and to alleviate some concerns of private citizens here in Ramsey County. But there's a lot of unknowns in this plan and it does not seem that there are many solutions or underlying reasoning for the proposed solutions. Uh, this is the first time I've seen this plan uh, here in the last week or so. I am certainly willing and happy to sit down with the Ramsey water, Ramsey County Water Board and discuss what the goals are and how we might be able to better present a a whole comprehensive plan that addresses not only the concerns of individual landowners, but the liability that we're exposing the county to in instituting a comprehensive plan like this. Uh, I, I'm not sure what the process is and what exactly is being sought here if the water board needs approval from the commission to move forward and submit this to the state water commission. My recommendation today is to table it and allow me at least until the next meeting to have a conversation with the water board to determine what exactly their goals are and to see if I can't help facilitate accomplishing those goals in a way that not only gets this plan established and approved, but doesn't obligate the county to overextend itself and to get into ownership of land that we're not exactly who the legal and rightful owner is. If you have any questions, please, please ask and uh, that's all I have.
To me, I, I struggle with the, the whole initial title of this resolution of support. If that's what they're asking for is for our support to complete a comprehensive plan. And by all means, um, yeah, go ahead. Um, you know, their uh, their own political subdivision and if they want direction from us. Um, I think Daniel's offered some, um, he would sit down and listen and maybe help guide and direct. I think the fourteen forty-one was a elevation that, um, I think they just put in there for conversation starter. Um, the state certainly doesn't have a, an outlet or a capability capable to that elevation. So I don't think that would be something that the, the state would be concerned about this particular time. So, but other commissioners' thoughts on where we want to go with this? Or the direction we want to point the water board towards?
I have a lot of the same concerns that Daniel brought up. So I think the first step would be for you to sit down with the water board. I think that would be a good idea. Try and come up with something that, like you said, is more feasible or on track for something that is attainable.
I do would agree that having Dan sit down with the water board would be a, a very good start of coming up with a plan that could be acceptable. Um, this elevation and, and cost numbers, I don't know. I'm, I just don't know, but This elevation and, and cost numbers, I don't know, I'm, I just don't know, but I think that would be a good place to start.
And I think there's organizations out there that provide this type of guidance, whether it be through a consulting service. And then there's also some cost share programs out there that are available to help the, help fund such a, a plan come to fruition. So we have some ideas on that that we can share with the Water Board too that we've researched recently.
Well, I think that's kinda where they're looking for direction, I think that would be a good place to start also. I mean, you know, maybe maybe this title that's wrong, you know, I mean, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They're looking, they're looking to start the conversation on finding an actual solution. As far as the landowners are concerned, it might not be a solution as far as the water's concerned. But I think that that's possibly some more experts in the room, it would be a better, better start. I think this was, you know, Brian said it was a rough draft and it's obviously rough. So, you know. Been a long time coming, I think it's a good step. That, you know, if Dan's willing to or Daniel's willing to put forth some effort and help him out, I think that's good. So I guess I'll make a motion that we table this and have Daniel sit down with the Water Board and try at least, I don't know if you'll have any document ready or not by the next meeting, but to have some direction that clear some things up so that maybe there's too much in this, maybe it needs to be refined a little bit.
Well, and I think the other part of that would be you know, Daniel's representing the county.
Correct.
So providing them some guidance on where they should be looking. And, you know, Water Boards are their own separate entity to an extent. They have the ability to hire their attorney themselves. And so Daniel wouldn't be necessarily representing them, but maybe provide them some guidance.
You're correct, Commissioner. I certainly wouldn't be advising them on how to complete a comprehensive plan, but I would, i- if they're looking for some sort of resolution of support from the Commission. Based on this document, I'm not really sure what they're seeking to accomplish. Obviously, there are some pieces that are clear and what they're trying to solve. But in order for me to make any sort of recommendation to you as a Commission, I'd like to have a conversation with the Water Boards so that I can understand what exactly they're seeking and to give a recommendation to you at some point in if, if a recommendation or a resolution for support is something that would be in the county's best interest as the two entities are.
The way I read that draft, it's wide open. There's no way we can expect the county to come up with that kind of money.
That is my concern as well.
There, there's no way. You just put a few figures together, I have, there's no way.
Yeah.
And to expect people to have, that we're getting tax money from to put into that. We're taking tax dollars from someone else's pocket to pay something else, did it? I'll use money as an example. If my tax dollars go into that, what? For what? There was no dyke built for me, there was no water storage for me, there was, what am I getting out of it? You know, besides somebody getting some money because they're storing water. I didn't create that as a taxpayer. And I, and I, I see their side of it. But I don't think we're gonna have a big enough checkbook for that half. I mean, that, that's just wide open the way I look at it.
No.
Definitely has to be narrowed down.
Yeah.
You know?
You're correct, Commissioner, and those are all glaring concerns in the.
And I get it, it was for conversation.
Right.
To start something, I understand. You know? But there's a lot of conversation that's gonna have to be involved in it.
Absolutely.
So Commissioner Gester, you had a motion on the table to table this and have Daniel have a discussion with the Water Board?
Yes.
Hey, okay. Do we have a second to that?
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table the comprehensive water plan from the Ramsey County Water Board. And have Assistant State's Attorney Daniel Hall speak with the Water Board and gain some understanding of what they're seeking from their county commission. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is say nay. Motion carries. A letter to the AG's office. At our last meeting, we indicated that we would like to have the Attorney General request opinion submitted by Ramsey County. Regarding a request for a letter or opinion submitted by Ramsey County regarding several issues during a conversation that was as the Director of the General Counsel Civil Division, you would be willing to write a letter or email outlining the reasons for the Attorney General's Office declines to answer the request for opinion. After consultation with Ramsey County Board of Commissioners, we are requesting a short letter or email outlining the Attorney General's position on the matter. Concise and to the point, I think we'd like some sort of ruling on our request for opinion in writing. I think this answers that question.
Yes, the letter is written. First of all, it's a draft and if that is appropriate, a second look-through will be done and made sure that there are no further issues, but we can certainly submit this letter. As, based on the conversation we've had with the Attorney General's Office, the reason for their decline to answer the questions asked in the original request is they think the law is settled. They think that the law is clearly on their side. From a practical standpoint, as an attorney for the county. And as I think everybody in the room is aware, the law is a little wonky and it's not really addressing the issue as it stands in Ramsey County. Devil's Lake is its own very unique water law issue that in my review of the law is not addressed by how the legislature has written any water laws to determine water boundaries and how bodies of water meander, because Devil's Lake is a close basin that meanders differently than any other body of water that I'm aware of in the United States. So the reason that they're declining is that if they do answer in any way, shape or form, it will most likely be used against them in any sort of litigation. If, as, I do not have much faith in this being addressed by the legislature, as it's an overly complicated issue that North Dakota would have to come up with a unique system to manage the Devil's Lake Basin. And that is not something that any governmental body is, well, is willing to get into if they don't have to. And so we can certainly submit this letter and have them issue us a short opinion or letter stating why they're declining to answer their reasoning or their decision maybe based on some other words than what I've stated today, but that's, that's where I believe the situation will end up. We can also just write an email to the Director of the Civil Litigation Department for the AG's Office and have them write out a short, brief statement to us so that we can provide that to the Commission and to the citizens of Ramsey County. Not that requesting an opinion reflects poorly on Ramsey County in any way, shape or form, but asking questions that the state doesn't know the answer to and we don't know the answer to is always a risky endeavor as you don't know who will react poorly to the situation, whether it's the AG's Office or a legislator who is very familiar with the situation. I, I can't know what those possible ramifications are, but I certainly understand the need for some sort of written statement. And we can certainly submit this letter, we can ask via just a phone call and an email back to the AG's Office so that it's less formalized and doesn't feel as aggressive as a letter may be received, but in the end, it will all come down to the same response.
Tough ball, send the letter.
I'm sorry.
Tough ball, send the letter.
I'm happy to do it. We represent the county. If that's the decision made, then that's what will be carried out.
I mean, I, I get the part where they're worried about it being used against them and all that. But my opinion is we're also
they're just looking for a response.
Right, I mean, if, if they take some innuendo out of, we wanna, you know, an actual response. And they take that the wrong way, then I guess no, I don't care how they take it, I'll be honest.
I mean, it's just a response, if they don't wanna respond to it, they can come back and say that too, I mean.
Well.
Yep, right, absolutely.
I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it's, this whole thing has no been no resolution to anything up here, I mean, it's been one Band-Aid after another Band-Aid and after thirty years I guess it, it's really boils down to
Well, this could answer all the questions.
Well. Well, yeah, but I mean, it's this Commission represents the whole county, not just the dry ones, I guess is what I'm trying to say. And we need to put a little effort into the wet ones. If that definitely wasn't eloquent, but that's how I feel. And I, I think the letter is the proper way to do it, I don't think an email or a phone call or, you know, if, if they, if they have legitimate reasons that they think they don't have to answer this, then they shouldn't have the professionalism to put it on a piece of paper and make it official.
I agree, and the AG's Office has told us and is happy to write that letter and they will do so when we submit the request and we'll we'll get that submitted and hopefully we'll have a response from the AG's Office for the next Commission meeting and once that comes in, we will certainly inform the Commission and let you know as soon as it does.
Looking for a motion to send a letter? I believe so, isn't it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I believe.
I'll make, I'll make that motion too. If this is the letter that needs to be revised, that we send the letter.
And I would second that.
Okay. Motion and a second, there we go ahead and approve submitting the letter. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose signify by saying nay. Motion carries. I think asking for the opinion was our directive enough, but so hopefully we make that clear. So, okay. Visitors and delegations, anybody wanna take five minutes?
No, new business yet.
We have new business yet? Did I miss something? Oh, yeah. VA abatements?
Who'd approve?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the VA abatements? Has been motioned in a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose signify by saying nay. Motion carries. State Fair Delegate. State Fair Delegate, State Fair Association is coming up November twentieth. The State Fair needs a decision from us on who's gonna represent our county by
Was Beth willing to do it?
She is, unless October eighteenth is when they need a decision by. So.
I would move to appoint Beth to represent the county at the State Fair Convention. I would second that.
Okay.
As long as she's willing.
She is. Spoke with her this morning about that, November twentieth is the date on that. State Fair Center in Minot. Further discussion on State Fair Delegate does Elizabeth Black? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Now that should be it. Visitors and delegations?
Karen Hausman, Church of St. Mary. Thank you for requesting a letter response from the Attorney General. I appreciate that you took that request seriously. I don't think that that's too much to ask from the letter that went to them. And I guess that's all I have today.
Karen, from a, the group of the township that submitted a, an indictment to our opinion? Have you as township representatives heard anything?
Nothing.
Okay.
Verbal, email, no, nothing.
You'll inform us if you do.
Yes.
Please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else for visitors and delegations? Mr. Hoistad? Oh, careful.
Got up too quick. Garland Hoistad, the girl township. But I was looking at the lake elevations the other day. And I got this took this from July to October. Now some people, they asked me why, why that water on the south side of Webster has gotten over on the east side of the road, on the Jones's land? And the water went up a half a foot just over the summer. And in that Garski Stark or Garski and Webster area, I had what I used to farm, we had six inches of drop per mile. So it could back a whole mile up across my field. So Jones's oh, I'd say he lost probably, he'd had an old seed, lost maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty acres. But he paid sixteen hundred and seventy-seven dollars in Ramsey County taxes. He's getting, will be getting assessed for Will be getting assessed for grain number ten. He lost all his inputs into that property. But. There's no sense of boundary. The state. Can't set the boundary on the lake. But it's ambulatory. So. There should be some kind of. Compensation to the people that lose everything. For the year. Kind of like back in the day when. We had allotments for grain. You know, you concede thirty-six acres and a quarter of barley. The SCS came on major. If they set that boundary. They could work with. Would have more employment. That was like.
Thank you.
Announcements, North Dakota Association of Counties Convention. Starting Sunday, runs through Tuesday afternoon. I'm not sure who is registered from the county. Candy is not going. Elections got her pushed up against the wall. And. That and temporary power outages in our office. I shouldn't make light of that, do I? Yeah, yeah. Make light of it. No pun intended. I know as commissioners, we usually get a lot of information out of that meeting. There's a. An app that has a schedule on there. If people haven't signed up or. Registration desk opens on Sunday at three P M. And then they have County Recorders Association. Load pass meeting, board gatherings. And then a welcome social Monday is really the kind of the kickoff things. And everything starts at seven o'clock with breakfast in the main. Entryway of the Civic Center down in Bismarck. Lot of really valuable information workshops that afternoon. Including zoning. Does your county need a? P I O. Public Information Officer. Yes, I would say they probably do. Grant funding. There's a workshop on that, digital traps. Networking, Commissioners. Association has a committee meeting and then all the different departments within. The counties, auditors, treasurers, clerks. Members, Association Emergency Managers, G I S coordinators, H R. Highway superintendents is three fifteen. On Monday, human services. Zone directors, planning and zoning, Sheriff. Association, Sheriff Left. State's Attorney, Tax Directors, Veteran Services. I'm not sure who. All going from the county. Is Beth or Beth or. You know? I know there's they had sent out a list a while back, but. I can't remember who was all on it.
I don't. There's not as many. As years past.
Yep.
I think she was just going for one day. Yeah.
Any Commissioners?
I'll be there Monday.
Monday?
I will too.
Okay. We have our D O T meeting at eight forty-five. Monday, and that is. Can't remember what room it's in.
It's usually on the main floor.
Main floor. So eight forty-five on Monday. Is when we meet with the D O T. And kind of go over our funding projects for the year. So a lot of great information. I know it's a busy couple days. For everybody and it's a busy time of year, so. They kind of switch things up. I did notice in one of the regional papers that their county. Adjusted their first meeting in November. To alleviate the election conflict. Is that something that our auditor would be?
We have already done that.
Oh, have we? Oh. My bad. Should look at my calendar.
Yes.
When are we meeting in November?
It will be Thursday.
Thursday.
Instead of Thursday, unless you can clone me, then.
Thursday, Thursday the seventh.
Yep, you can have it Tuesday.
You will be recovered by then.
I hope so. I hope so.
But I I know Candy's been pulling her hair out a little bit and. Her office has been busy, so appreciate all her hard work and her overtime and. All that kind of good stuff, so.
Just a little update on that. As of yesterday, we've nailed out. About twenty-two hundred and fifty ballots and we've gotten eight hundred and some back, so. Little over thirty percent. Today was. Extremely. Chaotic, but it's it's okay.
Getting better?
It's it's okay. Twenty-one days left.
Twenty-one days. You want to provide any updates to the public on? Election protocol, what they need, what they don't need?
Eric actually did a.
Coffee time?
Clip on the radio.
Okay.
Just reminding people. And then we're going to do something when it gets a little bit closer for those people going to vote in person. Like what they will need.
Identification.
Yep. Driver's license, utility bill.
All that kind of good stuff. So. It'll be here before we know it and. Be over and. Ba da bing, ba da boom. Any other information you want to get out to the public for the voting? Your office is open. Daily eight to noon.
Eight to noon and one to pie.
So if they're bringing back ballots or have any questions, those are the times. So.
Mail mail time has been. Roughly about a week. In coming and outgoing, so. It's like one forever stamp. Yeah. So. We've kind of have, we kind of have our days set as to. When the last day is that we will, you know, be mailing different things out unless they want to. Come and pick things up in person because it will not get to them. In time. It's just. And it's not only here, it's the whole entire state. So. We have a lot of foot traffic, which. Which is good because, you know. If you've seen the voting box on the counter, we made it, you know. Kind of fun.
And. We're doing a trick or treat. In the courthouse on Halloween.
Halloween, yes.
And in association with the downtown. Halloween Alliance or. Downtown Alliance. So come dressed in your spookiest costumes or as yourself. Whatever's spookier.
We just had each office. Donate. A bag of candy for. The people that have graciously volunteered to. Be out front to hand out candy, so.
And we invite people to bring the kiddos up here.
Yeah.
What time does that start? Is it?
Four to six. Four to seven.
Hey, on Halloween's on a Thursday this year, this year, so. Looking forward to that and don't forget Operation Green Light for Veterans, the resolution that we. Passed at our last meeting, courthouse will be lit up in green. Here coming up shortly, Bryce has done a really good job of organizing all this. Bryce Crosby, our Veteran Service Officer. Bringing this forward and. That will be coming up. November fourth through the eleventh. Shining a green light to let veterans know that we appreciate and support them for everything that they do or have done in the past, so. Coming up, so with that. Any further business? Sheriff? Yep, absolutely.
One thing. One thing I did forget to bring to the commission is. We got two new patrol cars and it's gonna cost about twenty-four thousand to have them outfitted. Which. Includes with the light bars, the cages that we had to buy. To fit these cars. And. We updated one in-car camera. But just for them to put everything in. The rough estimate was right around twenty-four thousand. I'm hoping it was less. Because one car, they added twelve thousand, the other one was eight thousand. And then. If they bring it up, so I'm saying it's twenty-four thousand just for the simple fact that it is. If one car's twelve thousand. Why isn't the other car twelve thousand? But we reused a lot of stuff. So. And we bought from other vendors, which were cheaper. So I need to start, actually, we're in the process of trying to get them on the road. So.
All the striping is done and.
No, the striping ain't done.
Striping ain't done.
But that's the cheap part of it.
That's the most important.
So I don't know if I need to get approval to keep going with this or.
No, I I think that was something that was. Purchase of the vehicle, so.
But just just so you're aware, when that comes in, it was. When I just talked to him the other day, it was a little bit more than I anticipated. Because I think last year, the two cars ran us right around. That's seventeen, eighteen thousand. So. I I didn't expect it to go up that much more.
Inflation.
So hopefully we'll have them up and on the road here shortly.
But you already have the vehicles in there.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So. That's all I had. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anything for the good of the order? No? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.